... five of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Donato, take real quick.
Mr. Whitaker? Mr. Guardioso?
Here.
Mr. Radkowski?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
Here.
Dania?
Here.
And George Needles, President.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting, which is being streamed live via Facebook. If you'd like to call in and make a citizen's comment, we're doing that at this moment in time. The call-in number is (571) 748-4021. I've got a background noise. Again, the call number is (571) 748-4021. The code to punch in is (262) 081-108PAM. Again, the code is (262) 081-108PAM. Please dial *6 to unmute your phone. After that, please state your name, your address, and phone number. You'll be given two minutes to speak, to make a comment, and afterwards you'll be placed back on hold. At this moment in time, I'll open up the citizen's comments, and I will give it a few minutes. We didn't receive any phone. There were no phone calls in, so I'd like to start the regular meeting. At this point in time, we'll start with our professionals' report, and we'll start off with Lisa Catania, our Township Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe you have a copy of my report. A few things that I would like just to note is that AutoZone is proposing to start on Monday. We have today received a copy of the grading permit application. We do not have building permit applications at this point. They are proposing to start on Monday. We feel that we can have a permit to them by Monday for them to start that work. The Springbrook Project, just for those who are interested in the Somerset drainage issue, Springbrook LLC has presented a grading permit for the work that's going to be done in Upper Trichester Township. And that particular permit, there's a few things that we want to see. For example, the easement agreement, so that we have one on file at the Township Office. That easement agreement is between Somerset HOA and the developer. We've also asked about maintenance, because a portion of that, pipe work, I'm hearing an echo, and I don't know if it's just me or it's happening everywhere, the pipe work are also part of the Upper Trichester Township system. So we want to make sure we know who's doing what maintenance over in that particular area. I do have several items on my agenda this evening. The first is the escrow release number two for the Wawa. Wawa is proposing, or is currently under construction. They have substantially completed the work for the schoolhouse. We have received a demolition permit application for the building that is still remaining, that is to be demolished as part of the project. They do have their stormwater facilities in. As I mentioned at the last meeting, they've done some of the traffic calming on McKay Avenue. However, because of some issues with the soil conditions there, they will not be paving that to final until the spring. But we're still working out how we maintain that area that it's safe for all pedestrian and vehicular traffic on McKay Avenue. So I do have an escrow release in the amount of $131,384.70 that will be presented next week. That leaves about $506,800 in the escrow account. That's solely for the site work. I think everyone's noticed that Gibbons Park is cleared at this point. We do not have any idea of when that is scheduled to start. The Jackson, Larry Jackson Senior Development, this is a reverse subdivision of two lots that were purchased as part of the repository list. Mr. Jackson has presented a lot consolidation plan, so reverse subdivide, take those two lots and make them one lot. He's presented, or his representative has presented a letter of extension till February, the end of February, to work out some items that need to be resolved on the project. Right now, there's no construction that is scheduled for that project or proposed for that project. And it leads me into the third item on my agenda. As part of their presentation at the Planning Commission, they've requested several waivers. As you're aware, we have many properties where the lots are adjacent to paper streets or unimproved streets, fully unimproved streets. And it has been the policy of the Board of Commissioners to have whoever is building those lots to do at least a lane of the roadway. It's required under ordinance to do sidewalk, curb, and then the road construction. Mr. Jackson is asking for waivers of extending the roadway. I believe in your packet you see a letter from Mr. Damien outlining those. We had suggested a turnaround. The ordinance actually reads that there needs to be a cul-de-sac at the end of the street. But because there are adjoining properties that have yet to be developed, we are suggesting that he puts a one lane of the roadway through his property, along his property line. And I would like to see some sort of turnaround versus everyone that's coming down that street using his driveway as the turnaround. We have issues that if the street is not completed and solely a driveway is put in for this particular property, the adjoining properties will then bear the costs of improving the road in front of his property. As well, we have issues with our maintenance crews that are doing trash removal. We'd like to get the turnaround. I don't know if you recall, years ago, we had put a community development block grant application in for turnarounds of some of these dead-end roadways to assist with that sort of snow plowing and trash removal. Also, in your packet, I believe, I didn't say it, but I perused through it, because unfortunately, I was on the road when the email came through. There should be a letter dated in 2018, May of 2018, from Mr. Jackson requesting a letter of acceptance of the township for him to buy the repository lots. In July of 2018, a letter was written to Mr. Jackson after conversation at Board of Commissioners meeting of the conditions that would be placed on the property if the township were to agree to this sale, or this purchase, excuse me. In September, Mr. Jackson accepted the conditions of that purchase approval. That purchase approval included extending the road, stormwater management, and some other items. I believe the copy of the letter is in the packet. If not, it will be for next week. We are not suggesting that the board accept the request for waivers. I believe it would probably be a reconsideration of the conditions that were placed at the time of purchase and not necessarily waivers. One of the reasons it's important right now is the fact that once this is consolidated, it doesn't fall under the subdivision land development ordinance. It actually falls just as a grading permit for a single-family home. And I applaud Mr. Jackson, because I grew up in a neighborhood. I live five houses away from where I grew up. I understand what it's like to live in your neighborhood. So I'd really like to have him succeed in getting the house done, but we do have certain regulations. We have other properties in the Twin Oaks area that we have required this, and the particular property owners have complied with those requests. I'm going to leave it at that, because I don't know whether you want to have the discussion now, or you want to have the discussion after I complete my report. That's up to the board. Mr. Guardioso, how would you like to proceed?
We can wait until after you finish your report, Lisa, because I do have a question. But you can finish your report.
Okay. The other thing that's on my agenda is, today we had a field view meeting.
I said I had a comment that I wanted to make about this, about the Bellevue Terrace project.
Okay. We can have the discussion before we move on, then.
So I just want to make it aware, and this is for our solicitor, that there was a letter, I'm assuming it was a letter dated September 26, 2018, from Mr. Jackson stating, you know, that he reserves his right to apply for any zoning waivers as needed during the process. So even though we told him, you know, what was required of him, he fired back this letter. But I don't think this holds any water for us to grant the waivers based on that.
I think the con-
Go ahead, Mike.
First of all, I just want to make the board aware that during the presentations before the Planning Commission, these letters were never presented to the Planning Commission. Nobody even knew about that until later. So this is all information that's coming in later to us, after the Planning Commission had pretty much listened to his presentation and recommended approval, but there was to be some things worked out related to roadways and extensions. Just because he sent a letter back saying he's reserving his rights, certainly he can reserve his rights, he hasn't given away any of his rights, but that does not change, in my opinion, does not change the conditions that the township put on him. He can certainly always ask for waivers or reconsiderations, but that doesn't mean that his purchase of the property is contingent upon that.
I just wanted to make the board aware of the additional letter. Thank you.
May I make a comment real quick, please? So in reference to the properties, so on Bellevue Terrace, Mr. Jackson owns the two parcels on the right-hand side, and immediately after that, on what would be the right-of-way is the pipelines. And on the left side, there's one smaller lot that is owned by a resident, and then there is a back lot which is actually, it's owned by Upper Trichester Township. So I think that we talk about consideration of what the board determines that they'd like to do in consideration of this. Just keep in mind that there would be no development past his property. The only potential development would be on the adjacent side, so maybe we look into what that would look like.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing that Mike had mentioned, as far as there was letters that were sent to him, making him aware that there would, making him aware of the potential development that he would need to do if he purchased that lot. He's aware of that. And it wasn't, and I learned, as Mr. Pierce said, that the information was not presented to the planning board. We need to make sure that they are aware of that. I'm sure that would have helped them in their deliberations. But again, I think that following up on what Lisa and George both said, we definitely want to make sure that, you know, he's able to build a home, and we can do what we can to work with him. But we do have requirements that we have required of other residents that built, but we have to take it on a case-by-case basis, and where the lot is located and what potentially could be next door, or how that could impact the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that's one of the reasons he's asking for the extension, so that we can get all that worked out. And I think that the engineer and myself will certainly work to have an appropriate solution worked out with that.
Thank you. Lisa, you can continue, please.
I know, just one other thing. I know that one of the reasons that he was looking for these waivers is that the costs that are involved in doing this work, we worked with some of the other developers, I'm going to call them developers or applicants, whatever you want to call them, in kind of staggering the work to be done, so that it does get done in a timely fashion, yet it does get done in the end, at the end of the day. As I mentioned, the last item on my list is the CSX update for the 322 project. We had a field view meeting today, mainly with Conrail, PennDOT, and the PUC. That meeting is continued. We will have a full utilities meeting on January the 21st, so I will have a full report of what has been discussed at our February meeting. But I did want to mention that we are in process, this is for the bridge over the CSX tracks, which is required to have a PUC approval. So they're working through that process currently. Otherwise, if anyone has any questions, I can certainly answer any of those or get answers for you for next week.
Are there any questions for our Township Engineer?
I have one. Lisa, how are we going, coming along with the fire hydrant for Willowbrook?
I spoke to Mr. Small. I sent an email out to Berger, who is the property owner for Willowbrook, requesting the hydrant be placed between A and E. Have not heard back from them, but it was the week before Christmas that I reached out, so I thought with the holiday, I would give them this week and then reach out again to them. Quite frankly, the ordinance reads, or the regulations read, that it should be, hydrants should be placed 600 feet radius, which means 1,200 feet apart. Based on the information that I had in the office, it's about 1,100 feet between the hydrant at the entrance of the Willowbrook Apartments and the hydrant at Jackal and Drive, so, well, Mill Road by Jackal and Drive. So by regulation, and Craig is aware of this, by regulation, I don't know that we can force them to do it, but we have asked them to do it. At the Planning Commission meeting, when the clubhouse was under scrutiny, or doing their presentations, that was asked. They said if there was a water main in the area, that they would be willing to install it. So at this point, I looked through the Willowbrook files that I have. I do not have a copy of the utility plan that shows water line, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. I just don't have it of that particular area. So that's the best I can tell you at this point.
Does that 1,200 feet, 1,200 feet, does that include private property or township property?
That's private property. I just went as the crow flies from point A to point B, so from hydrant to hydrant.
Okay. And the other question, I was over that way during the storms and everything, and that retention, is that retention pond for the water runoff going to be that close to that back of that building? Or are they filling in more of that? And it was ponded with like four feet of water. Is it supposed to be working?
Yeah, right now, it is not functioning properly. It is only partially installed. They've been installed because of the weather. They probably will not proceed with the remaining part of that until the spring, because they have plants. It will look similar to what we have across the street on Mill Road. It's a similar type of system. So right now, it is not working. It's in what we would call a construction stage.
Okay. Is it still that close to the building?
It's about, I want to say it's 15 feet away. I don't have the exact number. I'll get it for you, have it for you the next meeting.
Okay. It just concerns me in case anything happens and the people have to rush out that back door, they're going to end up in that pond. That's the only thing that's worrying me. I never realized it was that close, and then there's a green pipe, as of now, probably sticking up out of the ground.
Right.
15, 20 feet away from the back door. So if they got to evacuate that building in the back, we may have a little problem. I don't know if they're going to be securing just that area with a fence or anything, so nobody just comes out the back door and there you are in the retention pond. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I realize it's got to be big because of the water runoff, but I was awful close to that building when I saw it. And right now, it's four feet of water in there right now, so that concerns me. But there is a fence right now, but I don't think-
There is a fence right now.
Yeah, but I don't think the fence goes around it. It goes around the outside, but I'm not sure. I don't recall if it goes to the building where the people still, if they evacuated the back of that building, that they're not going to go straight and end up in there. I'm not sure if the back part's fenced off right now, if it's not being used properly right now. That's just a concern I have with it.
I have to make a phone call to Vic Kelly, who's the engineer for that project, tomorrow. We got word at 6:15 tonight. I saw an email that they are planning on changing the light from light poles to wall packs, and we don't have plans for that. So I need to reach out to him to see what change they're making. Supposedly, it's because of wind loads, which makes no sense to me. So I have to get some more details, and I'll bring that up to them if they need to put some additional fence and see how we can work that out. That's not, they can do that as a temporary, and then we can figure a permanent solution.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Does someone have a question, or can I?
At this moment, I'd like to move on to our solicitor's report. Mr. Michael Pierce.
Michael, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe. Yeah, sorry.
No, I wanted to ask Lisa a question, and it wasn't going through. It just looks like the paperwork on the escrow release for Propco isn't the right paperwork. It says amount to be released, which is the bottom number, is $490,000, which I think is what we just asked.
No, you did, you did, 490 is the total of the two.
Okay, that's what I-
131 and, wait, I can get you the other number. The first was $359,005.50, and the second one is 131,384.70, which should total the 490.
Right. That's what I was looking for. I was looking for that 359 number in that subtotal there, where it says previously released. That's fine. It's just an accounting error. That's fine.
I'm not so sure it's the right paperwork either. I think this may be what was submitted by my paperwork, the amount released, it says including this release. So you look up top, it says work this period, 145, less the retainage is the 131,384. The original finance security was 996, 974,22. The amount released, including this release, should say that 490 number. So I'll have to check. That's weird.
Yeah, I think it's-
I probably did that. I did it on my laptop, so I need to check. I'll get that for you next minute. Mm-hmm. That's weird.
If there's no other questions for our engineer, we'll move on to our solicitor's report. Mr. Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a copy of my report on the file. There will be several action items that if the board wishes to move forward, that we will need to accomplish. Mostly, these are related to the February meeting. We would require a motion authorizing the solicitor to advertise the ATV and dirt bike ordinance that was presented last month. I think I haven't received any additional comments or questions, so it would be appropriate at this point to authorize a advertisement for passage at the February meeting. The next action item also involves advertising, which would relate to the traffic signal ordinance that was prepared by the engineer and the consultants, related to updating the traffic signal mechanics, mechanicals rather, associated with any land development to get up to the latest standards. So that would require also a motion to move forward on that. In addition, I prepared drafts for the tax collector and salary ordinance, as well as the tax certification fees. Any of those numbers, we just picked those numbers out. The board can discuss that, make any changes. I just wanted to have something in your hands and available for that particular thing, should the board so consider it. We're coming up against time constraints to be able to do that, because once petitions are filed for those various positions, specifically the tax collector, that would have to be set as to what it currently is, unless it's done in advance and prior to the petitions being filed, then it would remain the same. There will also be action items specifically concerning Mr. Jackson and the Bellevue, excuse me, Terrace, extension, as well as the Fazano property extension, specifically the Fazano property extension. I think that there's going to be some discussion and meeting to make sure that this overlay is going to meet what the township looks for and has desires related to that property, as well as the expectations of the developer. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and everybody decided that it would be good to just kind of have, flesh out those plans a little bit more. So the applicant asked for some more time to be able to do that, to make sure that they- So, the applicant asked for some more time to be able to do that, to make sure that they're not having to come back to multiple meetings and multiple waiver requests and hearing requests. So, that would be an action item. In addition, the Act 537 Resolution related to Delcora and Aqua, we are in a position where we should consider those proposed resolutions either one way or the other. In the event that we do not agree with that, Delcora through Aqua, if that deal goes through, will still be processing, but I do not believe that the township will then be getting the benefit of the trusts and those items that were set up for rate stabilization. If the township wishes to go in a different direction, and I believe there have been discussions with the sewer authority and through Delcora, they certainly have that ability to do that, but I think that they had been in somewhat of an agreement as to what was going to be provided as a benefit to the township, specifically some upgrades to pump stations, that different type of stuff. I'm not intimately familiar with all the details on that, but it's not really that much different than what had been discussed previously with this board, but they are now just asking for those resolutions to be able to present to the Public Utility Commission. Any issue related to the mergers and or acquisitions with Delcora and Aqua are going to be handled by the Public Utility Commission and still subject to their jurisdiction. I believe that everybody has probably seen or heard, at least from the most part, that the courts, Delaware County Judge Dozer specifically issued an order dismissing the objections of county council, and that matter is now going to proceed before the Public Utility Commission. We are still in the appeal period for that, and I don't believe that either side has indicated what their position is going to be related to an appeal. We have had a significant inflow of tax assessment appeals for this go-around, more than I've seen, and I'm sure based on the assessments that have come out, more than I've seen in previous years. We have entered our appearance on behalf of the township to monitor those and to participate in any discussions regarding resolution, and that was taken care of as they were being I believe that most of the other matters were covered in the report. If there are any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Any questions for our solicitor?
One quick one. I haven't heard nothing else from Somerset since her email.
The only thing I heard from Somerset is I actually got a telephone call from the attorney, actually yesterday, believe it or not, who indicated that they were working with the engineer and reviewing some of those plans and the requests. I think that they are still, at least, I think their desire would be to have the township pay for it. I indicated to the attorney that the township has made no commitments to pay for all that work that needed to be done. He understood that, so I think that they're looking at their various alternatives and how they're going to go about that. That's all I know, Joe.
Just item number 10, just to address the board is, I'm fine setting the salary at 5,000 a year for the tax collector. I don't know if that's acceptable for the rest of the board, but I'd like to get this done as soon as possible, as Mr. Pierce indicated. Pretty sure you start circling lady petitions towards end of February, beginning of March, I believe. So, if we can get this done in January, that'd be great. If it overflows to February.
It would have to be February. The actual passage would have to be in February because we would authorize the advertisement if that's what you wanted at the January meeting for consideration in February.
Our February commissioners' meeting will be prior to the circulation date of petitions, correct?
Yes.
So, I think our goal should be then.
So, just to be clear, so we can give Mike some direction, are we comfortable with using that $5,000 number as the number for the, because we have to prepare and advertise the ordinance. So, maybe if you have a number in there when we do that?
I'm fine with 5,000. You have, I mean, it's, there's four of the commissioners here, so they have to, they're going to have to weigh in either tonight or next week.
I think I originally was one of the ones who originally suggested it, so yes, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, so I'm going to use that number for what we present at the board meeting. On the flip side of that, we also have the ordinance to, we had the request to increase the cert fee from $20 to $25. That came through the deputy tax collector. Did he have any objections to us proceeding forward with using that number for that ordinance?
And just for point of information, that is consistent with what many certifications are throughout the township. Throughout, I'm sorry, throughout the county.
It's $25.
Yes.
Yep.
So, if there's no objections, then we can get Mike moving on the advertisement.
So, we'll use those numbers as our starting point for the motions for next week?
Yep.
Now, for the other discussion on it, we've talked about it, but we never really, the deputy tax collector, is that up to us or that we continue to use the same people? I thought we were actually going to discuss all this before the numbers. I know the numbers were there on the paper here tonight, but using bars and all them, are we still using them? And then do we have to notify anybody that's running? Well, they will be notified already once they have the petition and running for the position with the salary with Vic. Are we still using the outside firm?
If I recall correctly, when Dan took the position, he agreed to keep them for at least the term he's currently serving.
Yeah, so we have, we have an accounting contract with them to provide cabinet services through the end of this year, and it was indicated to us by Mr. Sinshigen upon taking his appointment that he would be, he would like to retain the current deputy tax collector at this time.
Okay. What happened, the question would be then, and I understand that, and I knew that part already, what I get at is the next individual that has the right to run for this position. The number's going to change because if this other one doesn't, is it our decision or their decision to select our deputy tax collector? Is what I'm getting at for the next year.
Under the first statute, the tax collector, I know this text, the tax collector appoints their own deputy, and then the Board of Commissioners accepts their deputy appointment. That's your official action to take. And again, so we have an accounting contract that expires at the end of the year. So, we would kind of be probably back to where we were a couple of years ago, where we had to have discussions with the incoming tax collector as to, you know, how the operation was going to work to ensure that the taxpayers got the best level of service possible and that the funds were turned over to the municipality in an efficient manner.
What, please correct me if I'm wrong, but what we pay to bars right now is something that the township is doing as a benefit. It's not, it's not a guarantee for the next individual that's going to run and become tax collector that we have to continue a fee, providing fees for the deputy tax collector. Is it correct?
Correct. Our accounting services contract with them expires at the end of the year.
But it is unrealistic to think that anybody could do this job for five or for $10,000 as we, you know, determined three years ago when we first had the issue. I think, now, the tax collector could certainly pick another agency or another company, but I think that we're going to have to continue to support it. I mean, we supported Pat with a temporary person, a part-time person, and we also made her township treasurer and paid her 10,000 for that. So, the money, while it's not the same, is comparable to what we were paying Ms. Devlin.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for our township solicitor? If not, we'll move on to our manager's, our manager's report, Mr. George Needles.
Testing, testing, one, two.
Okay.
Good evening. You missed my whole spiel there. I'm not going to go through it again. It wasn't really extending anyway. The appointments that we will have up, coming up for next week that need to be addressed are the second ward, Board of Health appointment is up for reappointment. So, please, if it's going to be the current individual, please let me know, or if there's another name, please let me know so I can have it on the agenda. Planning Commission, we have the third ward, again, same thing, current member. We have a vacancy in the first ward. Ed has that information. I'll get it sent out to everybody. We have, we'll have a vacancy at the Property Maintenance Appeals Board. That's an at-large appointment. I was talking about this appointment earlier, just so everyone is aware when we're seeking out applicants. This is a position that may only meet, you know, could meet every month, but most likely they meet once a year. I think, I've been here for five years, and I can recollect three property maintenance appeal hearings, so it's not really a good position for someone that really is looking for something to really get into. It's more for someone who kind of knows how to do this and is okay with an appointment where there's not a lot of meetings. The rec board, we have a vacancy in the fifth ward. The Southern Delaware County, we have a vacancy in the second ward, Rest in Peace Gilking, and we also have a vacancy, or we have a reappointment, appointment from the fourth ward that is up. And then from the zoning hearing board, the first ward appointment is up. So, all those will be considered next week. Please give me your names as soon as possible. I want to get them out to everybody so everybody knows who the appointments are.
And George, if I might interrupt, Tom Breslin indicated today in a discussion with Barb that he is no longer, that he's going to resign that position, so that position will be open. Don't assume that he's going to be reappointed.
Yeah, he's, my understanding is he's retired and then retired.
Retired.
We have, we'll have a banking resolution with Dan being appointed as the tax collector. We will need to add him to the tax account bank account. So, we have the banking resolution and signature page. I will need signatures from all the members of the Board of Commissioners, Dan and myself on that account, once we pass that next week, so I'll be going around collecting signatures. The wage resolution, we talked a little bit about that in the executive session that will be announced, and we will pass that resolution next month as we do our next, at the next board meeting, as I normally do. The tax collector update. So, Dan was sworn in by Judge Horstfeller. She came out and we did a socially-distanced out front screening ceremony. It was very nice. I had a great conversation with him the other day about some of the duties. He is working with the deputy tax collector. He's got, it's going to be a pretty tough year, especially with the reassessments. There's going to be a lot of questions, so he's working on getting the appropriate people to contact and find out all that information. He's a very, very bright individual, and he's going to make a great addition to the township. Looking forward to having him here, working with him. So, it was a very good selection by the Board of Commissioners. The new LNI software, we officially put in our first permit. Very excited about this. Next week, we'll be holding some training with the zoning officer as we transition the UNOs to them. As you remember, last year, we had our successful first-year implementation of our finance software. This is an add-on to our finance software that integrates everything with the idea that eventually people will be able to apply the permits online, pay for permits online, pay for anything at the township online, and streamline the processes of our workflows. So, we're very excited about this. Gabby has been doing a stand-up job working with the admins on getting the initial setup of this going, and we're going to be rolling this out more and more throughout the year. The payroll conversion update, we switched to a new payroll provider. There'll be live for our first payroll. Jim Ray, Ray Fuller, and Marco Benelli have been working very hard on this to make sure that it's all set up and running. We're going to have to test run on our first payroll, which is this Monday, and then there's training Tuesday for Jim Ray and Ray to get the deeper divers to the back end of the system. Everybody's doing a great job. The time clock was set up in the audio department today, so that's going good.
So, George, the department's going to do their own payrolls?
Yeah, so they're already doing it up there with the current system, but we found a lot of, like, the current system is built for larger companies with very robust payroll departments. This is a little bit like a more user-friendly version that's going to make it a little bit easier. It satisfies some of the problems that they identified up there that we need to resolve, some of the problems the police department identified you can resolve, and some of the things that we've seen from the administration on the other side. So, everybody's really working together to go on this stuff, so kudos to all them. Newsletter, we have a four-page newsletter that we would like to get out as soon as possible. This includes some really good information, some of the restoration stuff that we've been doing. You know, it's been tough with everything we've been struggling on, the crime's been doing a good job, the home needs contest, getting people engaged, so we want to celebrate that. We paid for part of this out of the last year's budget, and we paid for part of this year's budget. Its primary purpose is to get out the track schedule, a paper version of the track schedule to every resident. In addition to that, we will have a newsletter that can go out with our tax bills, and that's going to happen in just a couple of weeks. What I'd like each commissioner to do, if they could, is just put together two quick paragraphs of either something in the past year that we've done that you're very excited about, or something you're doing that we have upcoming that you're very excited about. If you want to spit all ideas off of me, I'm here, you know, I can be a call. Feel free, we can talk about some of the great things that we've been able to accomplish lately. And then under other, we will have an escrow release for Summers Lane, property on Summers Lane. We had timber harvesting back there. We call it illegal timber, timber harvesting, that we caught and worked through with the Delaware County Conservation District, where they did some planning and some stream banks, stabilization, and some areas that they really screwed up that are now going in, and we feel that they are satisfied to the point where we can give them their money back. So, kudos again to everybody for getting that going and moving forward. Other than that, we've just been extremely busy. One exciting thing is, keep my fingers crossed, but Andrew has been working diligently on the cable channels, and if everything goes as planned, we will be broadcasting live with audio on our cable channels next Thursday night. So, fingers crossed, but I'll know, we'll know by Monday, I believe, and if we are, we're going to push that out immediately because that's a big thing for us. Thank you.
George, just two things. One, mine, I like to, I'm going to be asking the board to nominate Andy Barknick for the fifth ward vacancy. And then, in the newsletter, can you put me down as the fifth ward commissioner or not the fourth? I don't want to make Mr. Neary nervous.
I didn't even notice that.
Oh, no. Joe missed something?
I caught the other four or five. I just still want to clarify things, one thing, George, on those paragraphs, do you want William Faulkner or Ernest Hemingway?
Hemingway, please. We've got a lot of space to fill. And just to comment on that individual for that record position, Andy, Andy is an avid user of our facility up here. Him and his wife are up here when we're open almost every single day, so I really do think that's going to be a great addition to the rec board, to have someone that really loves to utilize the facility up here.
That's, Brian's excited to have him also, so that's, so that's a plus.
George, I just got one quick thing. Can we please somehow, some way, work with the fire moors for this year on these business laces? I don't know if we have to get somebody from high school to help us or whatever, but we need to make sure the emergency contact number is not the store or the business number. We're having issues all year still, and every contact number that the fire department tries to reach out to, that they come up with, goes either to the business or somewhere else. We need that emergency contact number every year. I mean, somehow, we got to be able to get this on that application. every year. I mean, somehow, we got to be able to get this on that application.
Yeah, we're working on it. Obviously, we can't control what the information is they put in, but, so the Emergency Management Committee was kind of looking for a project to take on. So that's actually going to be what their project is, is following up with the businesses and verifying the emergency contact information. So we're going to take on that project and probably split it up into quarters and recall back to verify.
Right.
And then they'll let us know when there's problem properties, so we can address that with them. And then on the flip side of that, the laptop is all set up for Craig, so we just got to get him in and we can actually show him then how he can access all that information in the system that he does have the touch of his hands as well. All that will be in the new system.
Because I told him that you got a phone number at 2:00 in the morning, they could call you. Thank you.
Wouldn't be the first, though.
Any other questions for our manager? Now, we'll move on to our Commissioner's report. We'll start off with our Vice Chairman, Commissioner Joe Baacko.
Is this letter on or off?
On.
On? All right. Told me turn it off earlier. But all my reports are on file. Just want to check with Commissioner Neary, did that street light get straightened out?
Yeah, I sent you an email about that. Thank you.
I missed it then. All right. It's possible I missed it. George, any update on the track route evaluation?
Yes. So the capital project for the Highway Department or Sanitation Department is to crash the routes, determine the efficiency of the routes that we currently have. That budgeted, budgeted approved, and we've reached out to them to try to get a start date.
That's what I was wondering if they started yet.
So they haven't started yet, but that's going to be starting within the next month.
I'm going to reach out to the board. I want to, for their, give me permission to take Lisa out to Bethel Avenue. I'm going to take probably Lisa and Pat. We're getting some complaints about stormwater runoff that's gotten worse over the last couple of years, and nobody back there can understand why. I mean, one of the things they thought it might be because of the ball fields, but I highly doubt that because they absorb it most of their water, don't they, Lisa?
It takes a second to unmute, but yes. A lot of that is a pervious area, but as well, they also have stormwater management that's involved with the project. We could certainly check to verify that that stormwater management's working properly, but that area, yeah, that area is in a floodplain, and I think I forwarded the permit from that particular complaint. We can certainly look at it, though.
I'll get in touch with you. Brian, Monday, we'll set up a deck.
I think we should look at that basin on Chelsea. See if that's functioning. I think that might be a good starting point.
Yeah.
I'm fine, Joe.
Okay.
I'm good.
The only other thing I, I don't know if all the commissioners got a copy of the proposed plan for Cherry Tree Road, the housing plan. Lisa, have you seen this?
Yes, we've actually completed a review. That'll be in my next month's report. One of the things that we looked at and are suggesting is because they have flag lots and lots that are landlocked, that they consider putting an additional roadway in. Again, it's at a sketch stage, so we thought we could at least see what we could, how we can resolve some of those issues. Ten lots is not a lot there.
Do you have any knowledge of these pipelines that they're going to move? Is that possible?
I haven't heard a word about that.
This is the proposal. Tent is, they want to take two lots and put, convert them into ten lots, correct?
Correct. Want to do that. They're not like little pipeline. They're major.
Now, my only concern, I just don't want to end up with a situation like we, you know, had in Conker Valley with very tight roads and not be able to have long street parking and things, things to that nature.
Yeah, we'll get all that through, you know, plan that when they go in front of the boards and all, but my, I never realized the pipelines that go through there. He's going to move them. I can't imagine that not being pretty costly.
Well, what's interesting about moving pipelines is typically, they would like to see 50-foot rights of way. So I'm not sure how he's proposing or where he's proposing to relocate them and still maintain the connect, the necessary connections. I don't know how he's going to be able to do that. No, he's going to have to.
Are there any questions for Commissioner Baacko?
No.
If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Nicole Whitaker.
Okay. Give me a minute so I can pull up my reports. Okay, so the library, just an update for the board that the library has been meeting with, I guess, a professional that helps to secure funding, but she, her, I guess, consulting fee is $100,000. So she is a volunteer with our committee. So she's giving us insight and giving us direction on how to proceed. So I'm actually going to, we'll be meeting with her again this month. I believe next week we have a meeting with her. So the library is still moving forward in terms of looking to, looking for ways of securing funding, sending out letters of support, things of that nature. Recreation, so an update from Brian, I believe you all received an email, just wanted to let the public know that all recreations were canceled on November 14th. All rentals and activities were stopped due to the rising in the COVID-19 cases. All scheduled rentals received a refund. The gym will open for community and renters on, excuse me, hold on a moment. January 11th. Excuse me. Confirm, we also confirm with Chester County Health Department and the state of Pennsylvania that we will open at 10% capacity, which will be 75 people in the gym, to people in the community center. The gym hours will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, Monday through Friday. I have a full detailed report. Well, whatever is, I guess, what was done since we shut down in November, there won't be any rentals or anything of that nature. So then we'll have rentals that will happen for January and reported in the February meeting. The Heart and Soul Committee, they also met. I'll provide an update with, on that, on the details of that. Again, we're coming to the end of that. Though the board should, I know at one point we wanted to, to meet to kind of go over the end result of that. The Heart and Soul Committee wants to make sure, before they get to the end and present the board with a resolution, to kind of give a heads-up ahead of time so that we're all on the same page and that they're not presenting something to the board that will not happen, right? So we want to have, I guess, ideals or items on there that the board is going to follow through with over the course of a period of time, and not unrealistic goals, basically. Okay, we want to have realistic, reachable goals that the board can meet. Also provide update on the, on any grants that we have. We know that the Community Development Block grant application was submitted, and hopefully we are successful with that. That's all I have.
Commissioner Whitaker, as far as the library is concerned, we still need to finalize the resolution that we passed with them.
Okay.
So, you know, hopefully we can do that in the near-time future. It was, it was pretty vague about what the, well, we didn't list the conditions. So we need, so we need to work on that still.
Right, yeah. And that, yes, I think I agree that we definitely need to clarify that, but there was discussion about types of funding, right? So there are, and this is something that the board is going to need to consider as well, because there are types of funding that require you to own the property, and the library to own the property, and then there are others that don't. So, yes, we definitely need to have a conversation about, and maybe another meeting about specifically just that, that subject.
Yeah, I think that's going to be important for them to know if they're going out, if they're trying to seek donors with large amounts of money. So.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So any other questions for Commissioner Whitaker? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Thank you. The reports, the Fire Marshal and EMS report, year-end report, will be hopefully next week. I do know the EMS is there. The Fire Marshal is getting his report together tonight. Emergency Management Report is in your file already. I'd like to commend them, give a kudos out to the Emergency Management Team and the Fire Department. While we're all home on Christmas Eve, they were out there busy. We had storms that hit the western part of Upper Chai, Bethel Township and towards Concord, and it was, they were busy for a good couple of hours when they could have been home with their family on Christmas Eve. Quite a few power outages that were put back on. Emergency Management Team was on, on top of that, but I just want to give a kudos out to them for that night that everybody's home with their family, and they're out there protecting everybody and doing what they need to do. And the other part I have here tonight is I'm excited to start our Boothland Town Center. The Task Force and the CH Planning Team will have a virtual meeting Monday, January 11th. This is our very first meeting. It's an introduction meeting with the members. And also, we're there to discuss, to have a clear expectation of the plan, and Barb and I are on the same page here that when we do meet, we will have a progress report given to the Board of Commissioners every month. And if there's any input from the Board of Commissioners, we greatly appreciate anything and give it to us in writing, or any concerns or any other ideas as we move forward. I was really hoping, unfortunately, as Commissioner Whitaker was saying, that everything was shut back down again. I was actually hoping and talking to Mike Ferrielli in the New McKay School, which is now a business for Nationwide that's moving over, that we were going to have this meeting over there, social distancing mask for introduction. I think it'd be a great thing to be able to meet and greet everybody that's involved. We have business people involved. We have residents of the First Ward. We have other residents in other parts of the township that were interested in it, myself and Barb, and we would keep everybody involved as we go along. I think this is a good plan for the Boothland Town Center. And we'll just take it from there and see where we go. And I think everybody I've talked to on the board has been very, can't wait to get going. We do have a member on the board that I will recognize tonight, and unfortunately, he's emeritus, is that we lost a member that was actually put on the committee. And I wish he would have been on this committee today, but we lost him with COVID. It was John Ondolf, because this gentleman, once he gets his fingers involved with something, he doesn't give up. And he's always been on me about the businesses in Upper Chai, wanting to improve Upper Chai and redevelopment, and this was a perfect opportunity. And unfortunately, he will be missed, but he will be on our team as we move forward. So, I learned that. That is it.
Ed, with the Boothland Town Center, is there, is, I know it's primarily within your ward, but I believe, is portions of it going to be streaming into my ward and Nicole's ward also?
What, some of this came about, the original concept that we had before the RFP came, went out, was, how can I say, from Chichester Meeting House up to the bridge, up to Lake Sharpless, up to Third Avenue, and not quite as far as Malatesta. What we received with a couple of the RFPs were the extending further, connecting, going over the bridge on Chichester Avenue. Now, this is just a plan and the ideas. There's nothing in writing.
Right.
And a lot of them said, we would like to see continue this possibility down towards the middle school, up towards Malatesta, and over the bridge, only because of the future plan of the library, to connect the library to the Boothland Town Center. Meeting House Road would be up to Third Avenue because that's where all your businesses stop up there. We got some of these ideas, and one of them did come from the CH plan, and two involved to see what the plans were for the library, to connect that with our plan and see how they would work together. Same way going up to Malatesta. It's all business on Chichester Avenue. My vision only at that time was up to Sharpless Avenue because that's where the Century 21. Quite a few of the RFPs that came back from the planners extended it up to almost Johnson and even up to the middle school. So that's the open concept, and we were, and that's one of the reasons we included the CH, or recommended CH plan. It was, and it did include zoning in that area, and it did include the apartment complexes that we see. But we got that understanding. We just aren't there, and we just need to get it started so we can bring it back to the board.
Okay. Is everybody's okay with Ed leading us, I mean, working on this with Barb? I'm okay. Is everybody else okay?
Yes.
Sure. Thank you. Like I said, these are all the recommendations that we saw in these RFPs for us to continue it. It wasn't our ideas, but it was ideas that they put towards us before we made that final agreement on the CH plan. So.
Okay. All right. When's your first meeting?
Monday night.
Okay.
Virtual.
Okay, thank you.
Barb and I will be up here, but I just can't have too many commissioners in one room, but it'd be easier for me to be up here with Barb than it is. I would love to have it over there. Mike would love to have it at McKay School. They let people see it too, but that's in the near future. That's not.
Any other questions for Commissioner Rakowski? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things. My reports are not available. The Police Department, which always has it by now, has been slammed the last week. We all know about the incident over the New Year's holiday where two people were severely injured. Fortunately, our officer was not severely injured. He is back on duty. One thing related to that is that that car is in all likelihood going to be totaled, and the chief was able to find another car, and he was negotiating to get it right away, which is a little in advance of what will, you know, what we would normally be doing. So you'd end up getting three cars this year, but you will get reimbursed from the, from insurance on the car that's been wrecked. So he is going to try to move ahead with that because if not, we're going to be short cars until we can pick up the two in August, September. I think we normally get them. So I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on that. The, I'd like the, if it's okay with everybody, I'd like to ask the solicitor to give me the exact procedure for declaring one side of the street non-parking. We did this once without going through the ordinance process over in Creekside, and it caused a major bruja. They're asking me for another street, so I want to do, I want to do it right down the line so that there's no problems with the police being able to enforce it and the. enforce it and the, you know, residents knowing that we followed all the steps. And finally, I know that most of the appointments are going to be next week, but the sewer authority generally reorganizes on the first Monday of the month and they are holding their reorganization until we get the appointment. Now, Michael, Mr. Schirmack obviously can continue to serve until, you know, the appointment is made, but I was wondering if anybody would have any objection to moving ahead and appointing him this evening as this is a voting meeting.
I don't, Joe, I don't have any objections, not unless Mr. Pierce says that we can't do it.
No, you certainly can. It is advertised as a voting meeting, so that's fine.
So I'd like to move to appoint Mike Schirmack to the Sewer, Southern Delaware County Authority. Just a second.
Second it, just to get it going.
Some motion and a second. Are there any comments before we vote? So should I take a roll call vote or can I just say all in favor? Go ahead.
So I wanted to have a, I was going to ask George for, I guess, we're going to go into executive session after this to finish up our discussion earlier. If we can hold off on that appointment till next week, because I have, I have a question about that and also my appointment to the sewer authority.
All right, so.
Are we meeting in executive session after this? I'm sorry. Are we going back into executive session?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we are.
Excuse me, and not to throw a blanket on this, but appointments to authorities are not subject of executive session. They would have to be done at the meeting.
Well, our executive session, our executive session, Mike, is to continue talking about personnel matters and not necessarily.
Yeah, but I understand that, but that's, the appointment for the sewer authority is not a personnel matter. They are not employees of the township. They're employees of the sewer authority. So that would not be something that you would be able to really discuss at executive session to come up with any kind of an issue. And there is a motion and a second, so that is still actually on the floor.
Okay, motion to table.
That would be the appropriate motion if it comes up.
Mike, can you hear me?
I can now.
We, we lost you for a second. The executive session is to continue the one that we had prior to this meeting tonight, to continue talking about salaries for the task employee raises.
No, no, I understand that part of it, but Commissioner Whitaker had indicated that she wanted to discuss this appointment to the sewer authority in executive session. And what I indicated was that an appointment to the sewer authority is not an appropriate subject for the executive session. They are not employees. There is a motion on the floor and a second. Commissioner Whitaker just went through and asked for a motion to table, which would require a second and a vote on the motion to table before the other motion is considered.
So we need to, does somebody want to second the table? So all in favor of the table, say aye.
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 No.
The ayes have it. Motion is tabled.
Okay.
So Mr. Pierce, I understand you're, you're, you're saying that they're not township employees and we're not discussing salaries or anything of that nature. Are you stating that I cannot discuss the person that I'm recommending for the appointment to the second ward in executive session?
That would be correct.
Okay.
All right, there, does anybody have any comments or questions for Commissioner Neary?
Real quick, just to circle back on the police car. This afternoon, we did get confirmation that the car was going to be totaled by the insurance company and all the contents inside. And they were able to locate that vehicle out by Harrisburg and the, I did process a purchase order. Since we do have the authorization to purchase two cars, we purchased that one so far. And then we will have all but $500 towards the total cost of the vehicle.
All right, thank you. If there's other questions for Commissioner Neary, we'll wrap up with my report. We went over Bellevue Terrace, Terrace tonight, 5410 Chichester Avenue. I believe that's going before the planning board. I think we need to act by February for that. Application, 65 to 6650 Cherry Tree Road, that's in a sketch plan review this month. We briefly talked about that tonight earlier. And as indicated last month, 3300 Marcus Street zoning application, it's going before the zoning board in February. And I believe Mr. Pierce will be at that meeting also.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. I do have one last item. It's not on my agenda and I apologize to Mr. Rakowski for not letting them know sooner. I did receive an email from Farrow Heating regarding the, I guess, the water laying adjacent to property. I told them that we will look into it and I believe, I believe you're aware of it also. I think he spoke, I think he spoke to George about it and we've been in communication with them also. I just want to, I just want you to bring you.
That's fine.
This has been going on for the past couple of years.
Yes.
Right, with that one in the neighborhood of Primetime Middle. Right, so Lisa's been in on it, Keith Crowley's been on it. I thought this was resolved. So.
It has not, it's not resolved and I'd like to put it to bed finally and, you know, just address it on the township level and then we can move on.
I talked, I talked to Matt Hoopman, since Matt Hoopman was our engineer and still is, and he's going, he's going to get out there to see. They put a berm up during the summer and it seemed to be working. But there is a direction of water that still comes from Farrow's property onto it. Unfortunately, I found out afterwards that the property does not perk at the time. I don't know about over by where he, his property is, but they're going to go back out there and see if they redirect anything out of that way. I mean, you do have a parking lot up on the hill that comes down. You got all his downspouts that are on his, his building, if, if, if my understanding is pretty close to the boundary line. So there's not, it could be a foot or his building could be the boundary. That was one of the things I wanted to see with Matt Hoopman when we're out there. And I talked, I talked to him yesterday, because today's Thursday, so yes. And we're trying to get out there within a week and see what we could do.
Let me know when you're planning on being out there, Ed.
All right, no problem.
So is Matt Hoopman not going to be half of?
Nah, he's Farrow engineer.
Who's, Tom Farrows?
Primetime Middle.
Okay.
Can I just interject real quick? Because we've actually been working on this on a couple of different avenues. The issue that's out there bringing out is a little bit more, it's a little bit different than what was brought up previously about the water laying with that.
Right.
Okay.
In the recent storms and with the ground freezing, there's a substantial amount of the property is just has water laying on it. And that water, the natural path of that water is to go out to a storm drain on Chichester Avenue that is, that's a Pendott storm drain. Well, that storm drain cover was collapsed and they weren't able to basically, the water wasn't able to get into the storm drain. So as well as the storm issue with the storm drain, this sidewalk is like sumped in there as well. So multitude of problems here. You have the problem with the water on the property, you have the problem of Pendott not maintaining their drain, and you also have the problem with the sidewalk, something in the wrong direction. So the water's not moving to where it's supposed to go. So we're trying to kind of like, address all of the situations at once to fix the problem. Because even if we can get the water, the original water problem fixed on that property, that's not going to fix what's happening out there right now. There's water on the entire property and it's just floating off.
It almost, it almost looks like the property is lowered in the sidewalk.
Correct. It's exactly, it's exactly what it is. And there's a gully. And then the water, and Lisa had mentioned in her last review that they should put some fill in. I think Matt will probably suggest the same thing on that area, build that area up. But that still doesn't address that when that water gets to that sidewalk, it's going to, it's going to sump there. So it's not, it's going to lay there. And that didn't address the fact that the storm drain is not functioning from Pendott. So we're trying to hit all of the different elements and get everything together.
We're, we're reaching out to Pendott to try to get this fixed too, correct?
Correct.
Who's responsible for the sidewalk?
The sidewalk is outside of Farrow's, so we'll have to talk to them about that.
Outside of where?
Farrow's Fuel Oil.
Okay, so it's their responsibility.
Yeah, so there's going to be a shared responsibility for this one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so does anybody have any questions or comments for me?
Mike, just a one more thing.
Go ahead.
The Fee and Lou, the planning board had reviewed the Fee and Lou ordinance and that's ready to go. So I'm going to have that on the agenda to ask the board to authorize the advertisement of changing that with us.
All right, I just, one last thing. I do want the planning board to review the SADO from the county. So I think I'm going to send them an email asking them to make that a part of their agenda for this year. I spoke to my representative, Charlie Fisher. You know, he's, I think he's looking, looking to put that on the, on the list also. So hopefully we can get that reviewed and hopefully if it's much more user friendly than the version that we have, since ours has not been updated in quite some time, I'm hoping that we can move on that within the first couple of months of this year. So, that's all I have. If there's no other questions, have a motion to adjourn?
So.
So motion in a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.